All right. Okay, I will call this committee of the whole meeting at 6:00 PM in council chambers. We do not have any remote electronic attendance. We do have one oath of office. Chief Gault?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time tonight. I'm certainly proud to be here in front of you to reintroduce you to George Janicio, who's been with the Moline Police Department several years. But he has been approved by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for promotion to the rank of Lieutenant. Did George come up with me? Prior to starting with Moline, Lieutenant Janicio worked for the Illinois Department of Corrections from 2001 to 2007 as a correctional officer. He began his employment with the Moline Police Department on September 11th, 2007. As an officer, Janicio has held assignments as an undercover street crimes detective, a K-9 handler, motorcycle unit officer, and a field training officer. Janicio was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2016, and prior to this promotion, he was serving as the afternoon shift patrol supervisor. Lieutenant Janicio is a team leader on the Crisis Containment Unit and has served on the team since 2009. Lieutenant Janicio is also a member of the Sniper Team and completed the FBI Basic Sniper and Observer Course in 2019. He previously served as the Combined Tactical Systems Less Lethal Instructor and attended the FBI Instructor Development Course and the FBI SWAT Course. Lieutenant Janicio not only serves his community here in Moline as a dedicated police officer, but he has also served his country for over two decades. Lieutenant Janicio has been in the United States Military for over 27 years and is currently serving as the Command Sergeant Major of the 44th Chemical Battalion, Illinois National Guard. Lieutenant Janicio holds a Bachelor's Degree from Western Illinois University and a Master of Leadership Studies Degree from the University of Texas at El Paso. Lieutenant Janicio will be the Platoon Three Commander covering the midnight watch of the Patrol Division. Lieutenant Janicio lives with his wife Nicole and their two children Hunter and Ava, who are also here tonight. Lieutenant Janicio's parents, Bob and Barb Janicio, here. And his sister Stephanie Janicio is also a Moline Police Officer serving on day shift patrol. So Mayor, if you would, could you come forward and I'd be honored if you would administer the oath of office.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jonathan Janicio.
I, Jonathan Janicio.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of Lieutenant.
Duly appointed to the rank of Lieutenant.
Of the Police Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Police Department, City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Illinois.
And the State of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the State of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the State of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois Rules of Professional Conduct.
And any Illinois Rules of Professional Conduct.
Applicable to Police Administration.
Applicable to Police Administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
Of the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
For the City of Moline, Illinois.
For the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Do you keep one and I keep the other? Congratulations.
So my privilege to promote you to the rank of Lieutenant. Congratulations. I'd like to invite his dad up here to pin the badge. If you want to shake the council's hand and we'll get the family up here. Feel free to come under the medal badge and take some photos.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Just in time for Christmas cards.
(inaudible).
Might just keep away for Christmas.
No, it doesn't seem too expensive.
Yep, thank you. And congratulations again. We move to number four, Board Appointments. Mayor's Appointment of Alex Salavaria to the Public Art Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Christmas Thies, expiring September 30th, 2024. So he stepped down and I chose to fill that with a Moline resident who actually happens to work for Quad City Arts. Public comment, is there any tonight? Seeing none, we move to questions on the agenda. Seeing none, we move to our Cow Agenda Items. 7.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Proposed Amendment, Substantial Amendment Four, to the City of Moline's 2019 Annual Action Plan. Substantial Amendment Three, Approved by City Council Bill, Resolution Number 1069-2021, for the Purpose of Program Fund Relocation and Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to the Program Activities Set Forth in the City of Moline's 2019 Annual Action Plan. Substantial Amendment Four upon the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Approval of Said Amendment Four. Mr. Vitas?
Sure. We're looking for approval for this amendment, in particular taking note that there is additional funding of $106,998 for the Food Supplement Program. And as you know, last year, we launched that program, I believe it was in November before Thanksgiving, working with Hy-Vee, and providing valuable resources to those in need here in the community. Plans are to have $60,000 available during the coupons available during the Thanksgiving holiday cuts coming up, and then in the springtime during the Spring Holiday, Easter Holiday, another $49,000. So we're recommending approval.
Is there any detailed questions? KJ is here.
I heard a motion to approve by Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, 7.2, A Resolution Authorizing Approval of Addendum Number One to the Contract with IMAG Corporation for Construction Engineering Services Regarding Project MFT 21-00279-00-RP, 26th Avenue Reconstruction, for the Amount of $26,700. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, it's a change order related basically to construction efforts and conditions that were found in the field for an additional $26,700, which is about 16.6%, bringing the total contract to 187,100. I'm recommending approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Witt?
So the excess for this, it doesn't have to do with this taking longer for it to be completed? Because I feel like when this originally came up, we were told that this was going to be done by the time school got out. Then later, we were told, we weren't told that, that it was only supposed to be done in November, but I'm certain we were told that the project was going to be done in the summer and not affect the school. And that was discussed when we used this third party, and that was one of the reasons why we were using this third party, so that we could get it done within that period of time. And now we've got a changeover for additional, and I'm just trying to understand, I mean, not to mention that we have a provision in our code that talks about change orders, if they're at a certain amount, that they have to come here before that they are actually approved, because I think we're in a situation where this money's already been spent. I mean, we can't really say no to this at this stage.
Let's have Mr. Dryer answer your questions.
As far as I'm aware, the project was to start after school in June. It was always intended to go late into the fall and into early winter. We're bringing it here as a change order. It's not that the funds have been expended to date. So that, to make clear, it's a complicated project, deep utility work. It's just better for the department to have outside expertise to inspect and to do the materials testing for this project, and that why we have used them. It's not because the project's going any further than we expected, it's just that there's the additional work that they hadn't anticipated and things. So the project's on schedule, the sanitary and the water is complete, the water is complete. They're testing the water supply, you know, at the lab to make sure that everything is sound, and then they'll start proceeding with the connections and then start paving. Hopefully, the weather will hold and they will be a complete first part of December or thereabouts, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Walden.
One thing, when this came up, dovetailing on Alderman Witt's comments, this is just for construction inspection. This isn't for what they have found in the ground. This is just for that inspector that's standing out there. And I would remind you and keep in mind in the future, take a look at what this costs for outside construction inspection services. I don't want to say it's highway robbery, but it's awful expensive to hire consultants to stand over projects and make sure they're inspected. Just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes, Mr. Witt?
And to that point, I guess, an explanation of why change in materials and things you found on the ground, if they're going to be out there and the contract was until November anyway, the additional costs, how does that effectuate if they're just out there reviewing stuff and making sure things happen, not supplying materials themselves?
David, do you know what the original project timeline was with the start date and what the proposed end date was offhand?
I don't have specific dates. I know they started after school started and the goal was to finish up early December, Thanksgiving in December. It's a time of materials contract, so you know, the contractor's out there for more time than you anticipate in the evenings and things, doing work and things that will add up, which will, you know, increase those costs and things.
And just one other point, following up to Alderman Walden's comment about the cost, that it's not highway robbery, it is expensive to use outside consulting services, it always is, no matter what the project. You know, it just begs the question, I mean, if we're hiring out at $187,000 additional consulting services, would we be better off looking at adding additional staff during the construction season of our own to monitor these projects, assuming they have the technical capacity to do it? I mean, that is a question, I think, that comes up.
Thank you, Mr. Witt.
Yeah, the concern is if their job is to make sure that the contractor is on time and doing the things, who is then watching these watchers to make sure that they're not hanging out until 7:00 at night and punching in extra overtime and then coming back with change orders and those sorts of things? It is concerning because, again, I don't think that this was the scope that was originally communicated to us.
Thank you.
But I think that was a question Alderman Walden had originally asked.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We move to our informational, the November Status and Information Report. Mr. Vitas?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before you is the November 22 Status and Information Report from the Departments relative to not only strategic plan, objectives that are ongoing projects, but also other elements that happen during the course of the month. There's questions about it, I'm always available to answer them. I have not received any to date on this particular report, but I'm always available to sit down and discuss any of these actionable items with you and/or a member of the Department Staff's directors.
Thank you. All right, seeing no hands there, we'll move to 8.2, our Budget Work Session. Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're back on the floor.
Hot seat.
Yeah, or the hot seat, whichever one you prefer.
This is our Budget Work Session, number two, for the 2023 budget, and it's really a follow-up from our Saturday All-Day Work Session. And in front of you, we've got, it's basically the agenda in the same type of order that we had on Saturday, last Saturday, and what we've done is updated and done a follow-up on all the questions that we had. We want to make sure that those are answered. And then at the end, if you have additional questions, we're happy to answer those, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions you have along the way. What I've prepared with the attachment that's in front of you, we're going to follow that. We're not going to put it up on the screen because the attachments are just too small to see up on the screen. But I'll tell you the page number and we're going to kind of fly through them. I timed myself and it's less than 30 minutes, what I'm going to say. So just, you know, and then we'll have discussions, so please feel free to ask questions as we go along. So the very first one, it's really just a recap, this is a real recap, on our payments to agencies. We talked about Renew Moline, to fund it $75,000, and it was split between the three TIPS that we talked about on Saturday. Then the Moline Center was $125,000. It is a combination of General Fund, SSA 5 and 6, and again, we did state that that impact is a neutral impact. The MCDC, we have added for $75,000, and when we get to the ARPA, you'll see that, but we've added that. It's actually in the '23 year, there is a typo on that sheet, and that was me, that was my mistake, I put that on there wrong. And then the Public Art Committee, with the direction of Council, we did place $75,000 in the first year only out of cannabis. And we're going to talk about cannabis a little bit farther down the line under number nine. So the first one to have you turn to is going to be Page Three, and it's just a follow-up on our large projects and the funding sources. So if you can find your Page Three, I just wanted to show you that we have deferred the $250,000 for the downtown master plan, and it will go beyond 2025 as directed by Council. Then we were also directed to push back the design of the new fire station and defer the $1 million from '23 into 2024. And right now, we're projecting potential bonding with no impact on the levy at this time, is the hope, and the construction then projected for 2026. So just to confirm that. Then, we also got direction for administration to work with the arsenal on cost sharing, the viaduct, bridge redecking, and the pedestrian letdown structure. So that will be on the works and we will do a follow-up with that when that has occurred. And the one-stop shop that we've talked about, the $600,000 that is remaining in the large projects on your list, will be used towards new software primarily to support a seamless delivery of planning services. So we just want to shore all that up, that that is indeed what we heard. So then the next item is on Page Six, and it's the discussion of the ARPA. And we have updated the '22 column, year-to-date, and that is through yesterday, through Halloween, actually. And I should also state, we filed our third quarter of ARPA. It's crazy, that can take two and three days to get that stuff filed, but it was all filed properly and everything was accepted. So a couple of those items, I just wanted to point out, we did add the $75,000 for the MCDC, as I stated, and it's halfway down, Page Number Six. You'll see it in the '23 amended column for $75,000. So that has been properly placed there. The next item, we did allocate the $163,000 of unfunded project money into water. And if you look on Page Number Seven, and it's about four lines down in '23, you'll see there, the $163,730 has been placed based on Council's direction. Then the question was asked for an update on the childcare, and KJ and Ryan submitted, it's on the next page, Number Eight, a memo with an update on the childcare. And I won't read it everything here, but to date, 11 applications were approved for a total of $320,000. To date, we've only paid out about $88,000, but we do have a commitment for 320. And in the current year, we had budgeted $250,000, so it's going to be split between the fiscal years. Then they talked about some of the stats here, three new daycare centers were approved, the awarded applications created 253 new slots for a total of 750 slots, and dispersment of the funds in compliance with program agreement are underway, and the program window for '23 applications will begin in February. So that's an update, and you can see, we still have the 250 placed in each of the years, the '22 amended for 250, and then the '23 amended for 250. Any questions on that? No. Okay. The next item then, the follow-up, was an update on the Small Business Loans, and that is on the very next page, 10. And KJ and Ryan, they're going to be coming back here on November 15th with a more formal update for Council's review, but right now, there's $1,110,000 remaining in that program for the duration over several years, period, with ARPA funding, and that includes the Business Accelerator. And it's broken into two types of support, the entrepreneur as well as the accelerator support. And with the new money, they're going to come in front of the Council on the 15th, but we anticipate that if all goes well and Council approves it, that applicant awards could begin that fourth week of April of '23. So that's a real short version. I know KJ will have more to say at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
But that money is also placed in ARPA. So with that.
Do you have a question, girl?
Yes. I'm so sorry.
And I, not on this, I had an general question, so if you're not ready for that.
No, that's, I was just going to come. I was just wondering now, with the allocation, is to come back and, based on the year-to-date and those couple of updates, if Council was good with the allocation as presented?
Right, we'll take your question, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah. I get, so I'm coming forward with something that I'd like us to consider increasing as we look into next year, something that I think we need. I've been trying to wrap my head around exactly how to chase after this and didn't quite get there at the Budget Work Session, but I would like to see us put $100,000 aside specifically to use for recruitment efforts, to help our team expand their toolbox, look at promotional marketing, look at how we can look into DEI tactics that might help us to further the reach, particularly for police and fire, who are so low in their numbers right now, but also just for any position that we're having challenges with from HR, and making sure that we actually have that money available to take those steps to reach out when we're finding that we can't do it through traditional recruitment methods. So I'm not throwing that as a motion specifically, but hoping to add that as a conversation.
Yes, Mr. Witt?
It's funny you should say that, because I had actually had the same conversation with the chief, was looking at where we were, you know, authorized force versus what we're actually, I mean, we could make authorized force 100 people and we just can't get bodies. And so looking at different avenues, trying to get more than our fair share, I think, is really important, and that was one of the things I was going to bring up. I don't know if $100,000 is the right number, I mean, if you're talking the citywide, maybe it is. I was thinking, you know, for police and fire, it may be somewhere between 30 and 50 for them to try to put something together, but yeah, I'm in favor of that. I don't know if that number seems right, or if we're having a huge issue with the rest, but certainly we are for manpower for police and fire. And so, yeah, I would be supportive of that. That would be the focus for myself, would be police and fire, but if we're running into it, we need to get more people.
Mr. Walden?
I endorse the concept also. My only inquiry is where we are, how we would fund it, and would we reduce somewhere else the $100,000, or 80, or whatever the amount would be, or is this an addition potentially that's going to raise the levy? So.
Oh goodness, I don't know about, go ahead.
No, and I specifically brought this up, looking at our remaining future allocation or where that is. I also know we took $100,000 out of the budget last, at the budget session, I'm not sure how that was addressed going forward, that may be something.
When you say, excuse me, Mr. Schmidt, you say allocation, you're talking about the ARPA allocation?
I was first speaking about ARPA, yes. So I, looking at the future allocation line item, which is here, on the unrestricted funds, $243,000 in 2024, that was the one place, that was sort of what led me to bring it up here, but I also know that we had reduced by $103 on the position requests, and so, and we had not really spoken to exactly where that was being made up, so that was another place that occurred to me, but.
I might suggest the line of the future allocation, that was the '24, it was on the three-year adopted plan that we adopted last year. We just moved, there was that $163,000 we talked about, we just moved it to water. That was unrestricted, so I mean, that money could be also split a different way. Instead of 163 to water, make it be, you know.
So are you saying that after that move, there's nothing left of unrestricted?
That's correct, right now, yes, all the future allocation is utilized.
I've got a suggestion.
Yeah, Mr. Vitas, and then Mr. Timian, and then?
I mean, if we're looking for some dollar amount between 0 and 100, my suggestion would be to look at the one-stop-shop and go there first, just looking at this and knowing where we're at and where we're going and what we're planning on doing with that particular project.
Okay. Mr. Timian?
Two questions. First, wasn't that 163 for the inlets, or was that?
It's a combination, and that is in, that's also when we get to stormwater, it's been included.
That's important. I just want to say, like, our neighbors to the northwest have done this, utilized money in this way very successfully for recruitment for law enforcement, and any kind of training that we can further for whether it's DEI or recruitment, always pays dividends in the long term, so I'm very much in support of this.
Mr. Williams?
I'm in support of, obviously, anything to get more police and fire, but I think the problem runs far deeper than just throwing money at it. We might see a few bodies, but this is something pervasive throughout all of Illinois law enforcement, and I'm afraid it's only going to get worse. So at the end of the day, I would rather see, or at least have a focus of the people that are currently there. I mean, once you get 20 years on the Police Department, you reach the age of 50, you can retire, but your pension goes up by 2.5% between the years 20 and 30. So that's something that you've got a well-trained officer that's already there, you want to retain him, and that's worth, you know, that institutional knowledge that's just flying out the door, and Chief Galt's got to try to manage, is, it's a bad situation to be in for the citizens, let alone the Police Department. So anything that would strengthen retention efforts with people that we have, but that looks like a stipend or something at the end of completing a year that's not pensionable, but it keeps them around, and then just selling them on the idea that you increase your pension by quite a bit by just sticking around for another year, and you're loved and wanted, and we want you to stick around, you know, because it's much easier to keep someone you have than try to replace, because you never know what we get, and we've had problems keeping people around even after we do find them, so.
Well, you bring up a good point, just on terminology alone, but that leading to the focus of these dollars, or whatever kind of program the staff could put together based on Council wishes, recruitment and retention is always pulled together, generally speaking. So that's a, you all make very good points. I would add too, there's a program through the COPS program that Chief Galt has successfully applied for previously for our school safety dollars. I think that it would be a highly competitive grant, but it's not impossible to take a look at it anyway and to see if there are any other agencies that are helping that way with recruitment, and maybe that can balance some of the recruitment and retention pieces if we were lucky enough to get it, but we need to have a, we need to have help. And obviously, you know, if the federal government is offering those grants, they know that it's a widespread problem, and if anyone had a perfect solution. And if anyone had a perfect solution, we'd be there already. But I think speaking to the values of making sure we're staffed and able to provide safety properly and keep morale up and all of those things and not overwork the people that are here and wear them out. I think I would support the council sentiments. Anything further on this, Ms. Barnes and then Mr. Schmidt?
I was just going to suggest, and I know Bob threw out the one-stop-shop potential money. There's also cannabis money that's unallocated that we're going to talk about on number nine. So we've got some potential different funding options to consider to get it done.
Okay. Can I make, correct my observation if I'm wrong though? We have, won't, we don't know the exact number that cannabis will bring in, but we have a definite number for ARPA dollars and that it's in our possession to get moving with it. As opposed to delays in opening or just when the taxes come in, right? Got it. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, and I don't think that I know of, there's a silver bullet or that what I'm proposing is the best way to go forward. Maybe Alderman Williams is right there's other ways. I mean, I personally would say it seems like, you know, in a market, just make ourselves most desirable and maybe we go back and talk about how we increase wages. Or how we, like you said, incentivize at certain places where maybe the pension system or there's a hole that we can fill that's going to make that difference. I'm open to that, you know, and not just in police, but looking at fire and looking at any place where we're having trouble retaining the people we need. I mean, I tend to be a pretty firm believer that if you can't get the bodies you need, you have to raise the wage. It's a pretty simple and straightforward thing to me. However, I also recognize it's a long-term challenge and you have to hit that pedal lightly if we're going to go down that road.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. White?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that shouldn't be part of the conversation, but that's a completely different animal because then you're talking about operating costs long-term and that structurally changes so many other things. This, from my standpoint, was, the idea would be this one-time infusion that we could get a program in place to differentiate ourselves, to show why Moline, if you're going to get into it, Moline's the place versus others so that we get more than our fair share, that we have a campaign that would be able to be used for multiple years. Because I don't think it is just as straightforward as you get more money and you'll get more COPS. I mean, I think that that's part of it. But if, at the same time, we're going to pay you more, but then we're going to disrespect you and not support you, then that becomes a, you know, great, you're going to give me an extra thousand bucks. But if I don't feel supported by that community, then I'm not going to go there. I'll go someplace else. And so I think that it, that becomes a much different animal. I'm in favor for this because of what we can do unless we're going to completely structurally change this as a long-term operating stuff. And I think that'll come in with negotiations down the road here. But I think that this should be more focused on the one-time infusion to put together a campaign so that we can recruit better right now and find those officers that we're maybe not finding right now.
Thank you. All right. We have enough information for you to bring another update when this comes.
Do we have a number in mind or do you want us to recommend a number and insert it into budget? After we speak to some companies that do this kind of work?
I'm seeing recommend.
Because I don't have a number.
Yeah, I'm seeing recommend a number.
We'll come back with a recommended number.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we're on to number four then?
Thank you. So I guess the only thing I'd say, are there any other questions on ARPA then? Are we, we're good on that allocation? Number four, I just wanted to make you aware.
Your honor, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Yes, Mr. White?
Mrs. Barnes keeps talking about, are we okay with the allocations? We are not endorsing this as a vote, are we? Just because we've gone by this doesn't mean that, like personally, I have endorsed what she's presented.
No, that, those votes will come later.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep. Go ahead.
And it's really, if there's any more follow-up questions, I should ask it that way. Yes. The next one, number four, it's just to let you know, we have updated, and it's with all the remaining items as well, updated all the fund equities with all the changes and suggestions that council had had from Saturday, everything that is also on the sheets tonight. I kept it in the same order simply so we followed the same format as last Saturday. So the next item is number five on capital projects. And capital projects start on page forty-six. And just a couple of things to point out. I can direct you to the exact page. The first one is on page sixty. We did add, we moved up the five hundred thousand dollars for the traffic signals at Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Sixteenth Street from two thousand and twenty-four and we moved it into twenty twenty-three. And so you'll see that on page sixty, about two-thirds of the way down the page, under miscellaneous, that that five hundred thousand is there. And the next item with complete streets, we added, we added complete streets of seventy-five thousand to each year of twenty-four and twenty-five. And those, you can see the seventy-five thousand if you turn to page sixty-eight and seventy-six. You'll see that those items have been added. And then lastly, just to give you an update back on forty-six, we always like to give council an update of the projected ending fund balances for the home rule, sales tax and utility tax. And if you look along the years, it's kind of up and down. But by the end of twenty twenty-five, our projected balances are, each of them will be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And that's actually right in line with the policy that council had adopted. Any questions on CIP?
No, I don't see any hands.
Moving on then is new personnel and that starts on page eighty-three. And I just wanted to show you the copy. Council had given direction not to hire any new personnel for twenty twenty-three. And you can see those columns on page eighty-three now for twenty-three, they are zero. And so those have been removed. And then our understanding from council was that directors may reprioritize or reallocate some of their budget dollars for twenty-three with the city administrator's approval to help pay for new positions or upgrades if needed. But no new dollars are going to be added. There, it has to be a high priority.
Mr. Timmy?
Just for clarity, I don't believe the motion was that no new hires. It's just that the money was taken away. So I, there is a slight distinction. I think everyone loves the positions, no one, we still want to pay for it.
No new, okay.
Well, and she has it listed here as no new dollars added for personnel.
That's second part with that.
But I stated it.
No, I brought both and I just want to make sure.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
And for instance, if for whatever with a laborer or something like that has decided, okay, we're not going to hire this, but we want this receptionist and instead that they could reallocate and figure that out.
Okay, thank you. But then just, I just wanted to let you know, those dollars have been removed and then that affects the general fund, the wastewater treatment plant, water and some of the other funds as well. But all those dollars and parks, it's all been removed. So if no further questions on new personnel, we'll have kind of a quick review on property taxes. We're going to come back to property taxes at the end. But just to give you an update where we are at right now, if you take a look at page eighty-six, we have updated four pages, just a very, very quick review. Right now, we are showing total levy dollars of fifteen million.
Was there a reason we skipped over the grant writer?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
One more bullet point.
I did miss that.
Okay, I didn't know if we were coming back to it.
Nope, I'm so sorry. I missed that.
It's a busy paper.
Very good point. Page number eighty-four, there's a little, there's a note here that Barry had written regarding Bob's recommendation. And his recommendation is to require department heads to aggressively seek out grants, both small and large, and make a determination whether those opportunities are something we can apply for or administer in-house or whether a contracted grant writing service is a better fit. And then also in the meantime, on the next page, eighty-five, Barry and Bob are both recommending that we sign up and get ahold of this grant writer and that that may open some doors with some new grant money.
Did you mean grant finder?
Grant finder.
Oh, did I say writer?
Yeah.
It's okay. Oh, wait, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Do we know that online database is, it's free to use through IML membership?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. White?
So I was the one pushing that. I believe that we should have someone here that is the one that's pushing these things. This grant finder thing is a great thing. And that's why in September of twenty twenty, I've got multiple emails and at the time it was Marty was talking about this grant finder thing. And he assured me that there was someone that was the designee at that point because one person signs up for it and then they get the updates and when things come in and you can do the searches and those sorts of things. My guess is that never really happened. But we've also had through a number of city administrators, had these conversations and it's always the same thing, well, we're going to aggressively, we're going to have our directors aggressively look for these things. With all due respect, they have enough on their plate right now, running the departments and doing those things. Their core competency, their expertise is not grant writing. They will do it because we force them to. But having someone who knows what they're talking about, that their eye is on the ball, that ball all the time and then they go, hey, give us the information and then we'll put it together and we'll send it out and we'll make the decision if we need to have an outside consultant to do this or if it's something that that person with the expertise can write themselves. The return on investment for something like that, again, if the rest of the council isn't in favor of it, but the communities that do that, that have somebody who is pushing it, they get more than their fair share of grants and things from the state and from the feds. And Moline has historically not gotten our fair share. We do every once in a while, we send out a press release when we get one of these things. But we should be getting them on a regular basis on all sorts of different endeavors. And so I would like to get some support from the other council members that we actually, this is a return on investment, that the money that we're going to put into it, we're going to get out. If we just keep doing the same thing and expecting different results, we're crazy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I'm curious from either Barry or Bob, what would be the challenges to bringing a person in? And obviously, there's budgetary, that is obvious.
Well, obviously the budgetary constraints because we're looking to not add any full-time equivalents. I mean, that was pretty much laid out by council in the first budget workshop and we've cut everything. You know, bringing somebody on board, obviously you've got to find somebody, you know, who would be a grant coordinator. But it has to be somebody who has a lot of grant writing experience at the local level and understands grants at the federal level and the state level and has to have multidisciplinary experience because we're a multidisciplinary organization. One person usually doesn't have that skill set. They really don't. And, you know, we get bombarded with grant information. It comes in, you know, I'm not going to say it comes in every day, but it does come in with great regularity. Especially in this last two years, it's been rolling around. Most of the grants that we went after have been like the Quiet Zone grant that's being written by a professional firm and that's what they do. Nobody in-house has that capacity, let alone a grant coordinator. The same holds true when we, when we were talking about the FEMA grants. We were using an expert over in Iowa to write the FEMA grant so we could pursue the stormwater project along Illinois ninety-two and to basically deal with the watershed issue over there that causes concerns for power industries. Again, that was an outside expert we brought in. The Seventh Street grant was done by KJ and Tara. It was an in-house job, you know, and the result was good. So there's no right or wrong answer to this, there really isn't. It's a question of, one, having the time to pursue it and then, two, having the technical knowledge to apply for it, you know? And then once you receive it, to be able to administer it, right? That's the trick. So like I said, there's no right or wrong reason, it's whatever direction council wants to go. I mean, I'm recommending, you know, not adding an equivalent, full-time equivalent, given where things went two weeks ago. If you want to add it, then I would suggest adding it. If we were going to do it, be in the administrative offices, executive offices. And I would recommend that it, the funding source for it, since it would be working across departments, that every fund contribute to it. The salary will be paid for each and every single fund, water, wastewater, the whole nine yards, not just the general fund, meaning on the tax levy. So that way you can get somebody on board.
So, Mr. O'Brien?
A little off-topic, Bob. The Arsenal Bridge ramp, we're getting a grant, we're going to try and get a grant for that, correct?
We are, yes.
And who is going to be in charge of that? Is that something you're doing?
That is, that is routing through the engineering department. And we are working with the Roosevelt Group. That's right, David, that's you.
Lucky guy.
And lucky, yes.
And that, the Roosevelt Group is funded through Riada, the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance.
So we would be using, you know, we would be responsible in part for writing aspects of that grant. But they have a professional person on the inside at the Roosevelt Group who has awarded these grants before, who actually has been involved since the inception of the program. That's the person with that background that would help us to fine-tune and refine the grant to ensure that it's a successful application because we've been told it's a great, great project and a great priority for the arsenal.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Yeah, the concept is that this will expand all of our directors' bandwidth because they will be focused on what they do every day, what they're experts at, running their department and those sorts of things. When they have to shift gears and all of a sudden become a grant writer, which is a completely different skill set than running their department and doing those things, if you've got somebody who that's the expertise, they can go, they can collect the information, draft the thing up, hey, read it, does that look great? Terrific, let's put it forward. That, I am certain that that will help their bandwidth of what they're doing for their department and result in us getting more and being awarded more of these grants and being able to actually even apply for more of them. Because if that's what their focus is, they're going to be finding them on a regular basis. And again, that's where you get the return on investment. I mean, if we pay for this across all funds, it'll be a little bit from everybody. But when we start getting more grants in, it'll more than pay for itself. And most of those grants then also have some kind of administrative dollars that can be, you know, five percent, several percent, sometimes in that range, which then can be funneled back in and then it becomes a self-propelled full-time employee. So it's not the issue of adding another full-time and then we've got to structurally figure out how to pay for them long-term.
Yeah, they should pay for themselves in the long.
A hundred percent.
Mr. Macias?
Thank you. And it could also be more of a community development position that has the grant writing or grant coordinating aspects to it. I myself have personally written grants and I've also worked with consultants to write grants. I know my limits and I know they know the right way to submit for certain grants. So while I've written some award-winning grants in the past, I know we're probably going to end up having to work with consultants in some of them. So, but that's not necessarily my personal one-hundred percent time dedicated to grants. Because, you know, sometimes you might see some that are a perfect fit and sometimes you don't. So it could be kind of a hybrid position too. So I don't want, I guess I don't want to limit ourselves to just think of a full-time grant writer. This person could also be doing some other community aspects as well. There could be some downtimes where there's no grants that are worth pursuing. So that's just my take on it. Let's be a little more broad on potential other duties that this person could also do.
So I think this is an item that we're going to need to have a little bit more clear direction from, or at least clear opinion from the council for our staff to know where we're going. It sounds like, Mr. Macias, you're in support of the idea of pursuing some sort of funding for a grant writer position. for a grant writer position. There are other, I see a thumbs up from Mr. Williams. Mr. Timmy Ann? Thumbs up and, all right, yes, question, Mr. Waldron.
My personal opinion is we shouldn't treat this any differently than those other proposed staff increases that we said no to. And I think we should put this in that same kitty. If the staff believes that this is worthwhile, they need to move around the other resources within the organization and make this one fit. That's the only way I would vote for it.
Okay.
That's why I was a.
All right. Mr. Schmidt?
Well, I think this is something that council is bringing to the table, that we're kind of identifying as is wanting to see that growth and and I think that we're putting a lot of expectation under the person we bring into that role of, you know, helping to get to that self-funding source, but I think we have to if we want to be there, we have to step up and and put that into the place. Conveniently, I was in favor of supporting those other staff positions too, so consistent for me.
All right, Mr. Macias.
Just wanna add, and it could be something that it could be years before it pays for itself. Um, we we just don't know, but it's an investment that I think is worthwhile. Um, if we have somebody who uh, just gets in that rhythm and create that culture that would tap into other sources of of funding, uh, I I I think that's a good thing just for the long-term future of the city.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's not just federal and and state, it's it's foundations, it's A A R P, it's, I mean, I I don't know how many times I've sent stuff to Eric or 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 different things when I've seen park things and and all those. And there there is a plethora of them out there. If you've got somebody who that is the world they live in. We're going to, I mean, we just kinda found out about this playground thing kind of by accident and, you know, it's been around for a long time. We just didn't know about it. And so if you had somebody who is that's their core, that's what they do, we're gonna find more.
Well, it sounds like we have a majority of council that's interested in pursuing some option there, so that would have to be brought back in the next round of updates.
Bring that back as well. I've got some thoughts in my mind. I mean, there's finding somebody locally who who could be a coordinator for grants, who has that federal, state, local background experience. I mean, we got a lot of people coming off the arsenal who, you know, uh, leave command positions and they remain in the area, for example. Uh, and they would be ideal candidates, but of course, then the question is just the cost, what would it take? Get them on board. So I have to give it some thought. I really do.
Yeah, and there's time for that, correct? It's time for you to think. All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Every day, Mary.
All right. We'll go on to number seven then?
Yes, carrying on to property taxes. Again, that's on page eighty-six. What we've done is updated, um, the spreadsheets that we discussed, um, a week ago Saturday. And the revised, um, total property tax levy amount is now at fifteen million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that is reflecting a reduction of the nineteen thousand, um, seven hundred and nineteen dollars from the parks levy to reduce the new positions. So that has been taken away from when we talked, um, on that Saturday work session. If you look on page eighty-six and if you look down at the little green box in the right-hand corner, you'll see then the distribution of where new tax dollars are coming from over the current year. There's a total of five hundred and eight thousand, six hundred dollars and those are broken down by new construction would be paying approximately twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. The available taxes right now projected from tip one, five hundred and twelve thousand, one eighty-eight. And the existing properties would see a reduction of about thirty thousand dollars. So that is the breakdown with that. If you look on page eighty-seven, then you'll see where the total levy dollars are split out by, um, type. And then that is where you'll see the parks fund. Um, the last time you saw this, the total parks levy, the increase in the far right-hand column was one million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand. It's now been reduced to one million, four thirty-two. And this is, um, the breakdown right now is proposed when we get through the end of the night. Just to proceed with, to meet the budget schedule, we need a motion regarding property taxes. It can still be changed, um, if need be, but we do need a motion that it's not going to exceed the hundred and five percent. If you follow on then to page eighty-eight, you'll see the projected, um, levy rate, and again, this is the big projected number. This is, um, without appeals in here. But based on the E A V and the total tax dollars we're looking at right now, the projected levy rate somewhere around a dollar and eighty-five cents. And it, if you compare it to the current, it's down a little over nine cents from our current levy.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Was that current, that's current, actual? Or current?
Current, actual. On the cur- from the current twenty-two budget, our current levy is a dollar, ninety-four, thirty-seven. And so this projected amount without appeals would bring it to a dollar eighty-five.
Thank you.
And then as an attachment, if you, well, we should hit page ninety quick, just to show you the total impact. Before, I think these da- numbers were a dollar on the residents. You can see there where it's not a big amount, but on the average resident, it's down two dollars on existing homes and existing commercial down about seven dollars. And then on page ninety-one, um, Larry Wilson did provide us with a list of the appeals. And this week, we are hoping to actually get the individual sheets, all the detail behind the appeals. Um, right now, it's listed at six million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand total that are in the queue for the board of review. And as soon as we get, um, any of these, any of the paperwork on this, we're gonna forward it to Margaret. She went after it last year and she aggressively went to battle on a few of them. And so we'll continue to do that, um, you know, up until the actual hearings, so.
Mr. White?
Did the these include the appeals, but does this include like if a property was purchased by a church or a nonprofit and then, because that's not an appeal, that's just a change in?
It does, and if you look down some of these, I'm trying to see on one, because we actually called, um, Larry, because we had some questions on it.
Like the Bible Missionary Church?
Yeah, you'll see, see, some of them are up and down and and it it can be, like you say, it's a church that's non-taxable. Or it can also be if there was a partial, um, construction on some of them, that there's some adjustments to be made. And one of them, I think, was even a parcel, a split that had to be changed. So they're still working through a few of those things, but these are all of the outstanding items right now, um, that they're gonna be reviewing. That is the grand total from Larry Wilson.
Thank you.
And we'll keep you updated on that.
Okay, next up?
We talked about the appeals and then the special assessments. I guess we, I should have mentioned that back on page number eighty-five. Again, when we get to the very end of this, um, we will come back as well with the S S A's five and six, looking for a motion on those property tax levy amounts as well. So moving on to the general fund, the total general fund, the design of the new fire station does reflect for twenty-twenty-three, a million dollars moved, uh, back into twenty-twenty-four. So you'll see that fund balance then as a percentage of operating, it's the third bullet down, is now at twenty-six point three percent or ninety-five days. And again, that's largely just from pushing that back as well as we cut some dollars for the, um, upgrade on one of, on the, on the engineering, um, assistant. And then the other thing, just to report on, we talked about this briefly, but I got a little more deal for, uh, a little more detail from Rod Chick. On page ninety-three, it's just an update on the tonnage of the road salt. I know Mike had talked about, um, at the time that one of the domes is seventy-five percent capacity. You'll see halfway down on page ninety-three. The salt dome capacity and the municipal services facility is the one that's at seventy-five percent. South slope is a hundred percent. And they've got the average over the last five or six years and talking about the actual bid that was proposed. So we just wanted to bring that back.
So.
Yes, Mr. White?
So for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we've got total used because it was light, was was twenty-six, eighty-seven. So I'm assuming we did not buy all the salt that we could have purchased on that contract?
That I.
Because I think that that was one of the questions we had asked on.
That's, you're right. You did ask that, so.
Because you're in the state bid, you're only allowed to, uh.
Hundred and twenty percent. Well, yeah, but I mean, we only used twenty-six hundred in twenty-one, twenty-two. So, I mean, I can't fathom that a hundred and twenty percent, because I think we came in with a full.
Don't know the numbers.
Yeah. Unless the current quantity on hand was lower, yeah, from the previous year.
I mean, we did have a a pretty bad year the year before. But I think we wound up, because it wasn't that the year that we were talking about, like bringing it in on a boat and bringing the our own trucks to go bring it over and all that kinda stuff? I mean, I I I think we need to figure out what our policy is on when we max out our contract and when we don't and when we leave things open because this isn't the first time we've had this conversation where we've asked and not gotten the full answer and then it winds up getting kinda
So if I'm hearing.
The budget happens and then.
If I'm hearing you right, that we wanna understand why, if we didn't use so much last year, why do we have to buy so much this year?
Well, and why do we have to? Oh, well, and what is our policy? Are we, why aren't we filling the domes if we've got a an amount? Now, now this year, if it's super high, maybe you make the decision at the end of the year, we leave it a little bit and hope that it's gonna go down, but I I that has, I was gonna say, that's that that would have to be a discussion. Yeah, exactly. But why we wouldn't have filled it up before is a question that needs to be.
Mr. Williams?
Did we sell some to Rock Island? I I vaguely remember that we provided some salt to somewhere else.
We provide salt to other people. Continue with Black Hawk College.
Well, because they ran out.
Right.
Yeah, they needed additional that we thought.
Typically, we're recompensated for that from them.
And then usually they buy in at the end and then we, it gets paid back in, but.
Mr. Doig, can you remind us, um, the reason the cost is so much more this year? If I'm recalling from the Saturday work session, it it's an inflated cost? The cost has gone up?
Yes, significantly.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven dollars, I believe, and it went from sixty-seven to eighty-seven dollars.
Okay.
Now, my, my personal, what I've done throughout my career is buy, buy low and and when when you're low. So so if you would ask me anytime, and and seventy dollars is has been a relatively stable amount to to pay for salt throughout the most recent years. So if it's seventy dollars, my my thing is always I would buy as much salt as humanly possible and fill the domes to the maximum capacity. If it's eighty-seven dollars and we approach the end of the year and we had two-thirds, we were two-thirds full, then I I would say, you know, I I would come to council and say, you know, maybe we should consider whether we wanna see if the prices go down. And then we fill the domes up, do it earlier to the next following year.
Okay. So your recommendation right now is?
Our recommendation right now is to
Get a contract.
Consult the formers all month.
Fill the domes.
Buy what we need for the year and then see what's left at at the end.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from the council?
I think the only other thing is is figure out what our policy is and get a policy in place, because, like I said, we've we've had this conversation multiple times on trying to figure out why and when and I I and I I appreciate your approach. That's the way it should be. I think we just need to get it on paper so we don't wind up in a situation where we're not completely full and have no idea why.
Thank you. Okay, please continue, Ms. Barnes.
The next item then is number nine for the cannabis fund and it's on page ninety-four. And this is an upper-updated, uh, version. At council's direction, we did remove, there was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer each year into parks. That's been removed. And we did reduce the trans, we didn't reduce, but we added a seventy-five-thousand-dollar one-time transfer, um, to the public arts fund for twenty-twenty-three. Then the balance of projected tax revenue, um, is left in a contingency so the council can, um, prioritize that at a later date. One item that had been asked at that Saturday workshop regarding public art, if you turn to page number one oh nine, it's actually the last page in your handouts. I did wanna point out that staff did do a tentative calculation on the two percent, because that question was raised. And with the projects that we have in the queue, and you can see there the middle of the page on page one oh nine, there's seven or eight projects. Our obligation, as best as we could calculate it at this time, is that it could be as high as seven-hundred-thousand dollars on those seven projects that are listed. So in light of that, um, staff would like to revisit the ordinance and then work to provide clearer definitions of what qualifies for the two percent. And some of the items that staff threw out, this was Ryan and David, I don't see Ryan here, um, that had worked quite a bit on this here last week, was number one, do federal and state dollars qualify? And right now, we aren't seeing where there is a cap for the city, those types of things. So just to maybe revisit it, if the council would be open to that, so we can kinda clearly um, identify and get our hands wrapped around this to, so we make sure that we know what our obligation is and that it's properly included. So we'd like to come back here after the first of the year for that.
Mr. Vitas?
Yes, the 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 real driving issue is is the, uh, the difference between private investment dollars and projects in these corridors versus street improvements. And in applying this two percent rule against street improvements, uh, and whether that was what the council intended. Because you can see at seven-hundred-thousand dollars, that's a lot of infrastructure. That's a lot of infrastructure and and infrastructure dollars are tight. And that's what people are looking for, right? Pods, get rid of the potholes, fix the curving gutter, make sure the signals work right. Um, so I I think there's a little bit of concern on the part of staff that this number is just going to be what funds this public art until we see projects start happening, because they don't have a great funding source. So when you got the grant for Seventh Street, apply the two percent to that. And should it be two percent or should it be really one percent? So we're really thinking hard about this at the staff level.
Thank you. Was there a hand, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, and and I had meant to go back and look at the ordinance, but I was fairly certain that we had discussed that there was a cap to what was going in even from the city and if there's not one, that I do think we need to add one. So that's a very clear place to go because just letting it run up to the end is not in the direction we wanna be going.
Thank you. Did you have a hand, Ms. Barnes?
Yeah, there's a, there's a provision, there is a cap, I think, for the, the private of a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And off the top of my head, I can't remember if that also applied to the, uh, of the private.
But there's none that I can find for city.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
And Bob, I think you meant to say Seventh, then.
Did I say Seventh Street again?
Every time you say Seventh Street, I'm very excited.
I'm gonna actually go.
All town!
I'm trying to pay attention to what I hear.
I'm not in your neighborhood, I'm sorry. I love that street, Dylan.
All right. Anything further, Ms. Barnes?
So again, just on page ninety-four, that is the current allocation. Then we've got the seventy-five thousand in there for twenty-twenty-three for the public art.
Thank you.
Yes, and then the next item. Oh, and now we have a bullet there and you can kind of read it. Staff will be bring back information at future council meetings for several items that are listed there. We had some really good ideas that were thrown out on the floor on that Saturday work session. Then for new special events projects, number ninety-five. Janine actually did a very nice write-up as part of the committee and her her write-up there is on page ninety-five and I might just highlight that T B K Quad City Marathon, right now is the only special event that has an M O U with the city. And that commitment um is for ten thousand dollars for fifteen years. And that committee, when they get back together now, they are going to review previous funding requests and determine those amounts that might been might also benefit from an MOU. And you can kinda read her recap there. But um, our recommendation is to have staff come back after the committee has met with their recommendation here sometime after the first of the year as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Then moving on, tourism, there was no change in tourism. If you turn the page on item number twelve with parks, it's on page ninety six. And this is just an updated fund equity and it does reflect the nineteen thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars reduction to the levy. And then you can see also that it pulled the two hundred thousand dollars additional money from um the cannabis fund for projects. And we did clarify that Parks would be managing the Tree Bank program going forward. And then you can see that ending fund balance there. So the net change was not was not very much, um, just largely the levy change. And then moving on to the library, there's no changes in the library. And on the city tiffs, just a quick update on page ninety seven. Um, there was a question to review um the development agreement for both Tiff ten and Tiff five. And Ryan did a nice write-up here um with a couple bullet points. And on Tiff number ten, the way he looked at it, and I believe he even went out to the trail. Staff believes that this requirement was fulfilled. In the development agreement, it did not mention anything about it having to be paved. So there is a trail out there. So that was his um report back. And then on tip number five with Coney, um, you can read there parts of the development agreement that Ryan was um looking at. That there's a required total of sixty five thousand square foot occupied. The development agreement requires a total of seventy five percent of the residential units be sold or leased. And the build-out plans showed a total of seven residential units. And CED has already reached out um to legal counsel to review the development agreements to determine if if they are in default. So we will be coming back to you with a report after Ryan's had a chance to work with Margaret on that.
Thank you. Continue.
Okay. The next item is our internal service funds. There were no changes from a week ago Saturday. And then moving on to number sixteen, water, it's on page ninety eight. We have an updated cash flow. Um, we did remove the new dollars that were for new position requests for the receptionist. We did allocate the hundred and sixty three thousand dollars um out of ARPA funds. And there's no fee increase for twenty twenty three. So with that, there was not much change from when we met a week ago. And then the same holds true for WPC, updated cash flow on ninety on page ninety nine. And um again, the receptionist has been removed and no fee increase for that fund either for twenty twenty three. As we move into storm water, um, that's on page one hundred. This is the updated cash flow here. And if you look back on page sixty four, if you'd like to turn back to sixty four, you will see that we did add a hundred thousand for the inlets in twenty three. We added thirty thousand for Twenty Second Avenue, Forty Eighth to Fifty Third. And we added fifty thousand for Forty Fifth Street, south of Twenty Sixth Avenue. And then as a result of that, and we also reduced the heritage storm, um sanitation is deferred to future years for twenty five thousand. And as you know, the council just adopted the ordinance on the fee increase to be effective January first. Then moving on to sanitation, kind of the same thing. It's on page one oh one. When we would looked back on this as we were trying to make changes for the calculation on the bulky waste, if we leave it with the free first pickup, as we were looking at this, we had not included a budgeted amount for our six and a half percent vacancies in sanitation. There aren't a lot of employees, but it did equate to almost fifty thousand dollars at that six point five percent. So we did make that adjustment of a negative fifty thousand for the vacancies as we did on other funds. We did increase operating costs by twenty thousand. It's very difficult to try to project what that change on that savings was going to be, but we upped it conservative, um, twenty thousand, we thought. And again, we are limiting the bulky waste pickup to the two and a half yards. And we are gonna bring back, we're gonna closely, you know, monitor this fund. And the fee increase right now in the budget is proposed um is for seven percent. And that ordinance, I think we're hoping to bring that November fifteenth or coming here shortly back for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mister Schmidt.
Sorry, what? Just one last thing as a request, if we are getting a lot of negative feedback, I expect there'll be some, but regarding the change to that policy, I just would ask it be brought forward to our attention. I think we will often hear about it ourselves from members of community, but a lot of members of community also may not think to or know to reach up. Um, so just if we're hearing a lot or running the same situations all the time, we'd just love to hear about it.
And you're talking about the two point five.
Yes.
Yards, bulk waste pickup.
Yes, for the bulk waste pickups. And um, we've talked about obviously, I mean, we're, I'm sure some people are gonna be upset, but in general, if it's the resident one-time-a-year kind of person that's getting upset, I think that's more of a concern.
Got it. Thank you. Mister Waldron?
Clarification, we all decided to go with the first bulky pickup free. I don't believe we talked about limiting that to two and a half yards. Is that what I'm reading here?
So the current ordinance is two 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 cups. So we we recommend raising that to two point five.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, we just never enforced it.
Right.
Mister Doi is on it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, you're welcome. All right. Anything further, please continue.
Okay, the next item is debt service. We have no change except um Alderman Wind had asked for some updated charts that were included in your packets. And so we have actually split out all of our outstanding debt, split the pension obligation bonds off of the schedule, and then we gave a ten-year history. So you can see what's happened with the debt and with um the arrow pointing to where we currently are at. And then we did the same thing with the pension obligation bonds. We'll continue to keep the history as we go along, um if that's what council would like. And um, it's crazy that we're already gonna be entering into two thousand and twenty three, our third year with debt service.
Thank you. I I appreciate it. I mean, I think that this really kind of shows where we were and where we are now and what a a change it's been. And it it does show that we've got some room, if we need some flexibility, but if we can avoid it, our streets will be much happier for it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, then going right down the line, the next item, yeah, no change in police and fire pension. So then we were down to the outstanding items, a couple items that the council had asked. On the facade program, we did look back and we have sixty five thousand annually that is included in facade program, each of twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five. And then the bathroom at Bass Street Landing was a question. And if we turn to page one oh two, we're getting very close to the end. Eric did a little bit of a write-up here and put some pictures of of what the um restrooms may look like. But he on his memo, which is on page one oh two, he did state that the SSA board uh is meeting here on November the second. So he's gonna be coming back to you with an update on November fifteenth. And he did um just want to clarify that due to the location, that there is no assistance and no assistance from Tiff five and that it would be the responsibility of SSA five to potentially pay for the project. And then their committee had asked potentially consideration for the council to share on that. But Eric, when he gets some direction from um their board, he'll be bringing that back on the fifteenth. So.
Thank you. Mister Want?
Yeah, I appreciate that, cause I think there was some discussion that we were gonna use tip funds and that was my concern was I thought it was just over the line.
You're right. No, you're exactly right. But anyway, so there's some information there from Eric, if you wanna look through it, but I know he'll have a more updated information for you on the fifteenth.
Mister Want?
Although we are in a uh situation where we're working through some amounts owed on that particular property. If those then are paid the uh in the river station, if those are then paid, they just pop into the general fund?
I, you know, I'm gonna have to look into that, but I believe that would be correct. Yeah. Thank you for calling up on that.
There may be some.
Yeah.
Mister Schmidt, you had your hand up? Did you? No? Yes?
I did, um, but I no longer do, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next, revolving loan program. Yes, just a very quick update that was from Tara on page one oh seven. You can kind of read it through, but the bottom line is the revolving loan program, we have not issued any new loans since two thousand and eighteen. The existing loans have been paying back and we've currently got a cash balance of about a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in that fund.
Yes, Mister Want?
Yeah, we had talked about this a few years ago about um doing more outreach for this this fund. I mean, this money's been sitting here. I I used to sit on this uh this thing and we were always going out and trying to find people because we, the money's there, we can help people. I mean, that's how Barley and Rice started. I mean, you know, I there there it can be used to really do so some good in our community. I think when we were talking about spending a little bit of of money to get that art outreach, COVID then shortly happened uh a- after that, um because I think in two thousand and nineteen, we were just shocked that no nobody had used it. So um, I really think, you know, through our economic development department or whatever, I know we've been talking about doing more and more outreach to you know, whether it's through World Relief, whether it's through uh um uh different organizations uh uh in our community through Mercato or or whatever. The money's there. We need to get that out there. We've got people sitting on this revolving loan fund. Let's use them and let's use the money and leverage some improvement.
Thank you.
So before we get to the motion on the property taxes, I did wanna let you know, we've got an updated calendar that is attached for you to look at. And we do need to proceed keeping on target um with all the council agenda items, but please know until we actually adopt the budget, which we've got scheduled now for November the twenty ninth, even though we hold a hearing, even though we have first readings, we can continue to work on the budget. So we'd like to follow this plan and we will bring back these outstanding items that we got brought up tonight. Um, but we're gonna move forward with this calendar, if that's okay. But to move forward, we do need a motion um to establish the estimated property tax levy.
Fair motion?
Oh, sorry, I'll let you finish. I'm so sorry. I was just gonna say, and your honor, you can certainly say this as well. Currently, as we just reviewed it, it's at fifteen million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars. And then the SSA's number five is at one hundred and thirty two thousand four seventy five and SSA number six at two hundred and sixty nine thousand two fifty five.
Thank you. Mister Schmidt?
We're looking for the motion.
Yes.
In the cow.
Yes. Well.
I make a motion to set the property tax levy for twenty twenty three at fifteen million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Tymian. Any discussion? Mister Want?
Oh, you made a motion.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say that um I really appreciate that staff saw, I think, all of our concern from the initial proposal and went back and found the way to bring down where we're going with the property tax levy this year. Um, with the introduction of the money coming from Tiff one and new construction is ob- obviously built into that, I think it is prudent for us to be moving forward with that, but also recognizing that this hot housing market, that it's probably not a great time to take take advantage of the largest amount of growth. I think we'll still benefit a little bit from some of that, knowing how the the appeals work out, but I think the 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 line we've taken is a way to make sure that we're capturing, we're moving forward, able to continue serving the community. But also doing so without jumping things up incredibly high. So, thank you.
Mister Want?
Yeah, I I want to second that. I I appreciate when when I first saw the original number, I was uh very concerned. I I think this is i- is a better number, but um going through and we we've had these conversations with the with the appeals and and us putting in uh to these documents, if if our goal is this dollar eighty five number, I kinda put it into this Excel sheet that we had been historically using, figuring out what the tentative EAV is versus what the actual EAV winds up being. And it's it's always less. You've got appeals, you got uh 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 different things through there. And it has historically been about um on average about fifty six percent of what the EAV growth was is this. Couple that with being in real estate and especially with the uh uh residential, there were, there was growth in in values of of properties and what people purchase them for in in those sorts of things. But there was a lot of people in this community that did not move, that is just paper increase to them. And but their uh the their assessments went up because of of those sales that happened. They didn't get the benefit of selling the property and and uh taking a a windfall from that or or those sorts of things. And so uh my concern is that they're going to wind up seeing this jump in uh assessed value to them, uh even though we're not um uh increasing the um the levy to the extent that was originally proposed that they may still see uh an increase in their uh their their property taxes. And so calculating this in and if if what we're communicating to the community is what our target is, is a dollar eighty five, I'm gonna make a a motion that uh we reduce or we uh change the levy from what was proposed to uh fifteen million five hundred eighty four thousand one hundred uh dollars.
That's an amendment?
Yeah.
Is it second to that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion, Mister Schmidt?
Yeah, I don't think presenting the one eighty five is the target we made. We've been targeting around what's that real number we need to increase and that one eighty five that Alderman Waldron would love for us to just ignore outright, but I think is is more accurately used as context, which is the appropriate way. So I think saying that that's been our target, that's been the number we use to double check to make sure we're not raising things up because we know that whatever we target is gonna go up a little bit. And so I think that that setting it even lower is gonna put us in a place where we are letting go of that growth that's coming from the Tiff closing down and is not something I'm gonna support.
Mister Want?
Oh, this is still an increase in the levy. I mean, d- d- don't don't get me wrong. I mean, this is, this does capture that uh Tiff one coming in. This is an increase because we were uh last year closer to fifteen uh three oh eight, I think. And so this is an actual increase in the levy. So uh it it shouldn't be couched as some kind of big decrease or whatever. We are as as a city, increasing into our coffers um uh two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars or or something like that into the general fund. So it is an increase. What I am saying is that our rate is still too high. You you look at that in our in our packet, um if you take out uh East Moline, Rock Island, and Galesburg and just use the other twenty cities that we're compared to, we're the highest. Again, our problem has been we've been comparing ourselves to Rock Island, East Moline, and Galesburg. But if you actually compare us to other similarly sized cities within the state, we're still on that high side. And so I would like to see that rate continue to decrease. We we've been able to do it for the last seven years. Uh, I think that we should, we're still putting a little bit more money into the uh the general fund coffers because it does cost more to to run the. I think that we should, we're still putting a little bit more money into the, the general fund coffers, because it does cost more to, to run the city. But again, as Carol had, had mentioned, we're still, with our general fund reserves, we're still at 96, 95 days? 96 days, somewhere in that, in that area, which is higher than what our policy is. We still have more money in reserves for 2023, and expected to have at the end of that year more in reserves than what our policy calls for. We're above that bandwidth. And so with that, I think that it's completely appropriate that the reduction in the, the levy difference, we would take from that excess general fund reserves, give the tax relief to, to our residents, especially those that didn't actually realize an increase, just a paper increase, to ensure that they're, they're not paying higher taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Two points, Your Honor, thank you. For more context, I think when we look at the increase of the proposed levy, it's 3%, with inflation being 8, that tells me a very conservative approach, which is a responsible use of, of tax dollars. Costs are going up across the board. A lot of governments are taking full advantage of that, we are not. And I think that shows restraint and responsible spending. To Alderman Went's point, to not compare us to our neighbors is silly. Because they are our neighbors, they are in the same geographical region, have the same workforce, have the same, a lot of the same demands. But to his second point, to compare us to the other cities in the, the state of same size, this point came up last year, and almost without exception, all of those municipalities have separate tax levies for parks, separate for library. So it is not a one-to-one comparison. One of them, the city of Normal, which was used in the article that you posted, has a sales tax of 3%. We can't compare ourselves to cities like that. And I think it's disingenuous to continue to, to say that we are the highest. We're the highest because we don't charge 3% in sales tax. We're the highest because all of our funds are combined into one tax levy. That's the truth. And so I, I'm in support of keeping the levy as it is.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Yeah, and I don't disagree that, that there are some apples to oranges in that. But we're also, in with some of those, we are three times the rate. So, you know, don't, it, it's not like that we are close.
Excuse me, please don't interrupt, Mr.
I, I agree, and that's why it's not, but what we're also talking about are neighbors. If you want to talk about what property taxes are across the river that we're competing against, where so much of the historic wealth of Moline has moved across the river, and, and is over there paying much lower property taxes. And now with the changes in Iowa, the, the income tax is also going to be lowered over there. We are in a fight for existence to make sure that people come here, that they don't feel overburdened. And again, this paper increase, in a situation in which we have excess reserves, as told to us by our, our finance director, above what our policy is, I think that the prudent thing is, we're still going to be increasing the levy. I'm just saying, we shouldn't be increasing the levy at the same time when we've got excess reserves.
All right, thank you. And just to keep us moving, if we, if you don't have a new comment about the motion on the floor, let's open the floor up to others who haven't spoken. Mr. Schmidt, and then I think Mr. Wald.
Two in the same breath say that we, it's not apples to apples, and then say, but we're three times some others. You're comparing us to Schaumburg and other Chicago-area metropolitan bases that have
Decatur.
so much more retail than we do. That's just, that's a disingenuous argument, to my mind. As we look forward to, you talk about, you know, we want to be competing against everyone, ensuring that people are gonna live here. We can't do that without having the money we need to provide basic services. And the only reason our fund is in excess, to the point it is, is because we were in a hiring freeze for so long, we didn't staff for so long. And when you look at our three-year budget, that excess does not exist. Because we are not raising taxes to keep up with inflation, we are using that money to keep the property tax levy from having to go up higher.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Wald?
I want to go back to a comment Mr. Alderman Timian made, reference inflation. Raising property tax will be an increase in inflation to our residents. It's not gonna help them. Keeping the levy as low as we can helps that inflation more than anything else we can do. And so I'm in support of Alderman Went's motion. Thank you, Your Honor.
Did you have anything you were gonna say?
No, I was going to make the same comment, that yes, as of '23, we are showing that potentially we do have excess reserves to the tune of about 95 days. But part of preparing a three-year budget is looking forward with our best projections of where we're going to be at. And if we don't have that property tax revenue, it's not going to hit that 21% mark. It could dip us below that. Yes, can things change over, you know, a three-year period? But right now, with the best estimate that we have in front of us, we're getting very close to the bottom of the policy.
Thank you. All right. Do you have something new?
Yeah, I, I, I want to address the straw man of just picking Schaumburg. If you look at Decatur, obviously a Mecca for, for sales tax, we are higher than them. DeKalb, I mean, there are a number on this list, and I agree with you, there, it's not 100% apples to apples. But don't pick out the one place that has Woodfield Mall and say, hey, that's what you're talking about. There are comparable communities on, on this list. And I don't disagree with you. If we get to that stage next year where we're not in excess reserves, then we will address that as we go. But for this year, it's clear, we've got excess reserves. And so to tax people more than we need to, when our budget shows that we're going to have excess reserves, I think is, is not responsible.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to remind the council that when the proposed cut last year of a half million was made, the people making that proposal said that they would be happy to incorporate the TIF 1 money as it expired. And now we're seeing that be, not, not Alderman Waldron, you're consistent, but that, that argument now is being changed. And, and I understand situations change, but I don't want us to be in a trend where we, we make cuts with a promise, and then the promise, and then another promise, and then it's gone. And so I just want to remind the council.
I, I do have a question for this council. Why did we ask for a three-year budget if we only want to look at one year at a time? Open-ended question.
Open-ended question.
And we'll be drawing this.
Your Honor?
Yeah, well, Mr. Went has his hand up first. Mr. Wald?
No difference in what we just did with stormwater rates. Staff proposed three years, we took it right down to one. Staff proposed stuff on sanitation for a number of years, we took it to one. How is this any different?
I just ask an open-ended question.
There's an open-ended answer.
Yeah, well, you, you're talking about a few funds that have very specific issues, where this is an entire budget that has, that's bigger. Mr. Went?
It's bigger. This is the general fund.
I'm gonna call you out of order if you have to, to make comments like that. Keep going, please.
That was your comment, and the reasoning was because it was bigger. And what I'm saying is, the size of the general fund versus the others isn't what we're talking about. This is what we're talking about, is, is taxing our residents. The three-year budget does, it gives us an idea. And even with the three-year budget, we're still within that band. We don't dip below it. I believe as we go through, that we are, that next year, we'll see where we're at, and if we need to increase it at that point, we'll increase it. But, but for this year, we're going to have excess reserves. And to Alderman Timian's point, we are increasing the levy. Like, I, this is not a proposal to decrease the levy, we're increasing it by over $275,000. And so we are capturing what happened with TIF number one coming in. So to say that this isn't consistent, I agree. Alderman Waldron, every single time he would, it, I made this motion, he would've been happy if the motion was to, to keep it at zero increase. But I felt that this was the prudent approach, especially since we've got excess reserves that are forecasted for this year.
All right, thank you. Do we have anything else?
Can I ask Alderman, Alder Person Went, please restate his motion before we vote?
To change the levy to $15,584,100.
Okay. Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Three ayes, four nays? Okay, that amendment to the motion does not pass. So we're back to the original motion, as stated here on page number 24. Property tax levy for 2023 at $15,817,478. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll, uh, roll call, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays? Okay, that motion passes. Next up on your sheet, is what you need?
Yes, we need a motion on the SSAs number five and six, as stated.
As stated, which is SSA number five at $132,475, and SSA number six at $269,255. So, Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to establish estimated property tax for the 2023 tax levy for SSA five at $132,475, and SSA six at $269,255.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we have discussion, yes. Yes, Mr. Went?
And, and these were the numbers that those SA, SSA boards had asked for.
Correct. That is correct.
Anything further? Roll call, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? Okay, that motion passes. And I believe those were the motions you needed this evening, so your portion is complete?
Yes.
Yes. So we'll call the regular council meeting to order, please. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't believe we have an invocation. Mr. Moyer is absent. Roll call, please. Alder Person Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer? O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes, October 22nd, 2022, and October 25th, 2022. And appointments made during committee of the whole this evening, November 1st, 2022. Resolutions. Council Bill 1176-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement with BNSF Railway Company and Delaware Corporation for preliminary engineering services for the construction of railroad crossing improvements at the proposed crossings necessary for the city to proceed with the declaration of a railroad quiet zone in downtown Moline at an estimated cost of $51,000. Council Bill 1177-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to acceptance of a storm sewer and drainage easement with Cynthia Al Thornbrog and Norman Teeter, owner of 1020 54th Street. Your Honor, I move for the approval of consent agenda.
Thank you. A motion by Alder Person O'Brien, seconded by Alder Person Schmidt. Roll call, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1178-2022, resolution approving the proposed amendment, substantial amendment four to the City of Moline's 2019 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment three, approved by Council Bill Resolution 1069-2021, for the purpose of program fund real, reallocation, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to the program activity set forth in the City of Moline's 2019 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment four, upon the Department of Housing and Urban Development's approval of said amendment four.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Schmidt, seconded by Alder Person Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1179-2022, a resolution approving addendum number one to the contract with IMED Corporation for construction and engineering services regarding project MFT number 210027900RP, 26th Avenue reconstruction for the amount of $26,700.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Timian, seconded by Alder Person Went. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1180-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a real estate contract with Heritage Wesleyan Church to acquire real property commonly known as ONE, Montgomery Drive, Moline, Illinois, with property index numbers 0832203002 and 0832205006, for the amount of $3,100,000, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk, corporation, council, and city staff to do all things necessary to acquire said real property.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Williams, seconded by, who was it? Mr. Macias? Thank you. Alder Person Macias. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll, oh, sorry, Mr. Went?
The due diligence period, who is doing that? Are we just doing that in-house? Are we hiring outside professionals that do this on a regular basis? Or what, are we doing environmentals, NEPA, what, what are?
Just kidding, just kidding. I had to do that to you. It was appropriate. I had to add some levity to this. So anyhow, what's going on is, is we acquired from the Heritage Church the Phase 1 environmental that was done in 2017 when they acquired the property, which would have been the Phase 1 environmental assessment, that 500-plus-page document we have. And so that's in our possession. I reached out to Tara Khan as a part of the continuing due diligence on this. Spoke with Jamie Murphy over there, was not involved in the project back five years ago, but spoke to her about doing the Phase 2 environmental assessment, which is about $8,000 to $10,000 estimated cost. And instructed her to proceed with that, because there were some VOCs that were found back in 2017. Of course, there was a flood in 2019, and a lot of what was there got kind of washed away. So there were test well sites on the property, so it's a pretty extensive report. And I went through the executive summary, and so that's what prompted the need to, in discussion with Margaret, pursue the Phase 2 environmental, so that estimate is coming probably tomorrow, after they have a chance to look at it. But she figured about $8,000 to $10,000. So that is going on. This week, Thursday, Mike Doye, Drake Daly, Sarah Mark, and I believe I'm missing somebody. Who is it, Mike? I'm missing someone?
No, I remember one.
Yeah, but anyhow, we are, and, and Rod. So we are actually going to go over there, and they're gonna meet with the operations managers of the property to get a good look at and understanding of all the mechanicals for this building, both the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing. It is a complex structure, and there are multiple, it has multiple HVAC systems, elevators, there's an escalator that is a test escalator. We're not gonna test that, we don't. We don't think, we need to worry about that. It's decoration. But we are going to do that. There'll be a follow-up meeting between myself as well as Pastor Paul, uh, with all of the tenants that are there because they've expressed current concern. What is the city doing going forward with them? So at this stage, there's been no new lease extensions. People are all kind of on, on ice until the closing date, which is estimated to be December the 12th. It might move up if we can get all the diligent, due diligence aspects done. So we are doing everything we can to secure it and make sure we, uh, the only issue I'm, I'm dealing with outside of the acquisition is, is the property management itself. Uh, I'm looking at that and wondering if we shouldn't be bringing in somebody to manage the property in light of the fact that, you know, it is, is a fairly large property. It's basically unutilized space for the most part, and especially after the church moves out. So it'll be limited just to the office, the original office building. And that's where the tenants tend to be. Uh, there's a tenant that does park inside the garage, uh, a surveyor. I've had the architect reach out, who's been there for the last five years. So I want to meet with them probably next week to go through that process and get an understanding, let them understand where we're at. Um, and explain the master planning process and the timeline so that they can have a little, little breather. So I might come back looking with, you know, some type of a property manager who would be out there and deal with things like, you know, toilets that stop working or electricity that stops functioning. You got to have somebody managing it, no different than the Heritage. There's somebody there full-time, so, so I'm working through gymnastics on that.
Well, I, I, I appreciate it, because my concern is obviously, once we end up in chain of title, we're going to be the big, biggest pockets that are closest to it. And we will be responsible for every environmental anything on any one of those pieces of property. So, um, whether that's the main area or any of those outside parcels that, that we wind up getting. And so I just want to make sure we're doing it. I, I did see within the, uh, agreement that we do have the ability, if needed, that we could extend the due diligence period for an additional 30 days, which then pushes the closing out, which, which also the closing then would be extended for the 30 days. So we, I mean, I want to make sure we, we do this right. It is important thing, I, I, I've communicated that I think we're probably still overpaying for what we should be paying for, for this property and what its real value is. I, I'm going to vote to, to do, do this because this is what, uh, we agreed to and, and, and I think controlling the property is important. But if we find anything throughout this process that is of a concern, it should be offset by, uh, with our, our purchase price. So be very, I mean, I know that the 21st, don't rush yourself. If we need to do the due diligence, do the due diligence. Search those things out, do the full environmental, and, uh, let us make the choice from, from there.
Sure, no, um, it will take about four weeks for them to get everything done in terms of the Phase Two environmental. They need about four weeks.
So we're going to extend it for 30, extra 30 days anyway, then?
Yeah, probably.
Margaret's nodding.
Margaret is available too. She's been ill the past two weeks, that's why she wasn't here last week, and she still has other issues going. And you can, is that for effect or are you really not well?
Sounds real to me.
All right.
Yeah, it is.
Anything further from the council on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thank you.
Alderperson O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Nay.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. And that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council bill 3045-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing the following locations. 27th Street on the east side from the south line of 8th Avenue, southward distance of 100 feet. 27th Street on the east side from 11th Avenue B, southward distance of 34 feet. 27th Street on the west side between 7th Avenue and 8th Avenue, and 27th Street on both sides from 11th Avenue C to the first alley south of 12th Avenue. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. So it's time for miscellaneous. I have a couple of things for you. Uh, Tuesday mornings, early on in the month, we have our Illinois Intergovernmental Meeting with Bi-State. And there are just a couple of interesting things to share with you. Rock Island's council did vote to agree to make Rock Island a port district. And that benefit is, um, able to be extended to the neighboring cities. So down the road, that could be something that, an option that comes our way. I, I will do the research to know why that would be a good thing, um, for us, but that it opens up some possibilities for us in terms of development or economic development. There's, were updates also on air and water quality. Um, and Moline was, has been well represented, um, especially by Tony and his staff at many of these meetings. And so he, our, our staff does have a really good eye on what's going on there. And I wanted to share a letter that we were, I received, we received today. And I'm going to read it out loud and then, um, share the official copies with the staff that are mentioned. Dear Mayor Rayapuddy, on behalf of myself, Regional Administrator Claiborne and our teams, thank you for welcoming us to the City of Moline to discuss President Biden's, Biden's Housing Supply Action Plan. I failed to mention, this is from the US, um, from HUD. Under the leadership of Secretary Fudge, HUD is committed to collaborating with stakeholders to advance the agency's mission and the housing priorities of communities. It was a pleasure to tour housing in Moline and to bring reflections from the tour back to an excellent roundtable discussion. We truly appreciated the city's coordination and hosting of the day on behalf of our housing partners through the Quad, throughout the Quad Cities area. I commend the work, quite notably, of Community Development Manager K. KJ Whitley and Police Chief Darren Galt for the outstanding tour and roundtable discussion. The sharing of best practices from the roundtable and tour are invaluable. Following the visit, Illinois Field Office Director Kim Lee Dana and I are preparing information for Secretary Fudge on the city's initiatives and recommendations from the roundtable discussion for best practices, as well as actions that can be taken in the Quad Cities to enhance our effectiveness in increasing housing supply in your area. Ms. Dana will also return to your staff with resources that we promised during our visit. We look forward to ongoing partnership with the City of Moline. Sincerely, Diane M. Shelley, Midwest Regional Administrator, Region Five. Congratulations to both of you. Please come on up while we cheer you on and get your copies. Highlighted her name.
You can frame it.
Yeah, and that is all I have. Mr. Williams.
The chief can not only facilitate HUD, he can roll up his sleeves and roast hot dogs at the first annual Halloweeny roast that, uh, they had on Saturday with the Stevens Park Neighborhood Group. They were very excited about it. The neighbors came out in force. They had a lot of kids, it was great weather. And they set it up in a, a safe way so that no one would catch on fire. No firemen would be seen anywhere. It was a purely police event and it went over huge. They had, uh, besides all the kids, they had pumpkins and everything else. And they gave away a free fire pit. It was just a very safe, fun event that was kind of unexpected first-year event. And it, it went over greatly and just want to thank the chief for, for letting these guys do that.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went.
Hopefully you did register it with the fire department if you were having a fire.
I'm sure the chief did.
Uh, two, two quick things. One was the trunk-or-treat, uh, was, uh, well, I had, um, some staff members that were there. We had a, a truck there. I think, I don't know how many kids went through. It was a ton, 640 or, or something, I think was the, uh, the number I had heard throw out there. Great event. Everybody, uh, loved it, so, um, uh, keep up the good work. That was from the, the Parks Department. And then a little, uh, update on, uh, Sergeant Billy Lynn. He did, uh, talk and, uh, with his dad. So, um, if, you know, uh, Bill was the, uh, the sergeant that got injured in, in East Moline that we spoke about last week. He did have some responses. He had asked his dad, they have mittens on him so he doesn't pull out, uh,
Tubing.
Tubing, thank you. Uh, while he's been restless, uh, but he asked his dad to take that mittens off. So it was, it was conversation with purpose, and so, uh, thank God for that. He's, it's still got a long road to hoe. Uh, there's going to be steps forwards and back, but, uh, that was, uh, something that gave me chills when I, uh, found out about that. I just wanted to, to pass that along.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, another trunk-or-treat success. Uh, I was representing the Fourth Ward at, uh, Logan Elementary School's trunk-or-treat. And every year, the Parks Department is there in, in, in full force. Along with that, and I don't know if we're unique, just because we're the best elementary school, but we have a touch-a-truck event as well. And so we have, uh, police, oddly, McGruff the Crime Dog came back from the 80s and he was there with us. A city bus was there. We had, uh, the Arborist was there at his stuff. Garbage truck, it was a fantastic event, well-attended. And I'm, I'm always grateful, uh, when the city shows up to make these jobs and these people real parts of the community. And, and it helps the parents, it helps the, the kids and everything. It's just, it's a great event, so, thank you all very much.
Mr. Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Retail.
Uh, just a real quick mention. Uh, we received a really, really late request, and you might have seen it on the news today, actually. But the, the folks from American Energy are contracted with a company that is doing some, uh, reconductor work on their power system. So if you happen to see the yellow helicopter coming and going from the IDOT property located between the Coney Building or Heritage Church Building and our water treatment plant, that's what's going on. And I worked with Margaret to put in place the whole harmless indemnification, because typically you don't let anything land in your city anywhere without permission or authority. So we, we had a hustle real quick to get that done, but I wanted to let you know that, that it's taken care of. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Dykeisen.
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other staff? That's KJ. Oh, you guys are playing.
Last thing is when first.
Just real quick, I, uh, one, I appreciate you treading lightly on the chief and weenie euphemisms. I got very nervous. Wait for a second. Uh, I just, I think, I appreciate you and Alderman Timian recognizing the work of the police department. I do want to particularly call Officer Tyler McGlaughlin and Detective Ian Newell, uh, who put that, uh, together. I really had no, uh, work done now other than showing up like the Queen of England, but they did a wonderful job, so I just want to give, uh, them, them credit for that. Also, to further, uh, your comment on Sergeant Lind, um, a contingent of, uh, police chiefs and deputy chiefs went down there today, and actually Chief Ramsey and, uh, from East Moline and his captain, uh, had a long conversation, uh, with him today, sent a photo, uh, and so, um, it, it does look, um, much better than it did last week. Finally, the last thing I'll tell you is if you travel the I-74 Bridge as of yesterday,